I call to order the Waynesville City Council October twentieth meeting. You ordered, roll call please.
We're gonna roll call.
Not for me, you haven't.
Councilman Farner.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
Councilman Rice.
Here.
Councilman Liberty.
Still here.
Councilman Conley.
Here.
Thank you.
And this stands for invocation, pledge of allegiance, and I'd like to have Ed, Edith, lead us in invocation.
Heavenly Father, we come to you Tuesday night asking your blessings upon this council and upon this city and its occupants and its workers. We ask that we conduct our business in a manner that is fulfilling to you and good for our citizens. We ask your blessings on our armed forces and their families, no matter where they may be, as it's all in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Clarence, you lead us in pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, but under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There will be one slight change in the agenda. The closed session scheduled point two had been held at five o'clock, so that will not be on the open council here. I'd like to have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Ed, do I have a second? A second. Mr. Wilson, roll call please.
Councilman Farner.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have any citizens' comments? We did have Maggie Sheldon on here. She's not made it yet. We do have a Stars and Stripes Community Recognition, and I actually, I'd like the city clerk to read this.
Let's see, from the Stars and Stripes National Museum and Library, the Stars and Stripes National Museum, Library and Learning Center hereby recognizes the city of Waynesville, Missouri as a true Stars and Stripes city for its ongoing embrace and dedication to the principles of informed citizenship, commitment and service in our democratic society. Whereas the community in question has done so diligently through its embrace of focused partnerships with its historical and cultural institutions, its veterans organizations, its civic organizations, its parochial and public schools, its Chamber of Commerce, other public and private entities, and its individual citizens. And whereas the principles of informed citizenship, commitment and service to our communities, our state and the nation must be ingrained in our youth during their formative years if we are to have a truly functional and productive society. And whereas the community in question likewise welcomes and embraces the spirit, commitment and service of the men and women of the armed forces of the United States of America. And whereas the community in question has likewise historically embraced the so important principle of freedom of the press, which it shares with Stars and Stripes, our nation's iconic and emblematic editorially independent military news organization, now more than a hundred and sixty years in existence. Be it resolved that the Stars and Stripes National Museum, Library and Learning Center honors and recognizes the community in question as a true Stars and Stripes city for outstanding service to our nation, presented this twelfth day of October twenty twenty-two.
Thank you very much. John, would you kind of explain how this came about?
So we were contacted by a gentleman wanting to recognize the city of Waynesville as a Stars and Stripes community. He actually drove here. He said he drove over six thousand miles this summer across. He was out in the western United States and was coming this direction and was actually, we were on his stop, but he drove over six thousand miles this summer presenting communities with this recognition. And he had contacted us to set up a meeting to ensure that we would be available to receive this award on behalf of the city.
All right, thank you. We have a late arrival, more than welcome. Maggie, would you come up?
Yes. So is that not late?
No.
Okay.
We saved this spot for you.
Did you like these hands, sir? Okay, thank you.
Give your name and.
Absolutely. Maggie Sheldon, representative, the director of the Waynesville Ozark Technical Community College, Waynesville Center in Fort Leonard Wood. Yay, there you go. So, well, first and foremost, I was gonna say, okay. Can you hear me, okay? Giving me a microphone could be dangerous. I'm just being honest now, okay? So I just want to say first and foremost, thank you, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Doyle, and the staff members for the city of Waynesville for having us tonight. I actually welcome the opportunity to always let you know how our initiatives are going in the community, but also how our partnership with the city of Waynesville has been so critical for our success for, well, since two thousand and three. So I know that some of you have been able to come into our building and to kind of get what I call the tour, but I always welcome if you want to always. Listen, you can come by anytime. We have coffee, it's great. So before I forget, I would like to, I know most of you and have had the chance to meet you at some point in time, but I would like to introduce Dr. Nasty Childress. He is the center president for Waynesville, Lebanon Republic, and Fort Leonard Wood. So if you wanted to come tonight, make sure that I can answer a question, he could, and also show what, how important our relationship is to the city. So, you know, a couple of things that I was talking to Mr. Doyle about was why was one of you given that date was because of our building. So in two thousand and three with OTC, we were actually in the shopping center. And due to the expansion and needs for the community through the partnership with the city of Waynesville, we were able to get our beautiful building that we're currently located in to the Waynesville Career Center. And that's been a wonderful establishment for us to serve the community and serve our students as well. So I just wanted to kind of give you an overview of what we've accomplished because of your efforts working with us. So right now, our location is the farthest from the art school campus that offers two fantastic technical programs, which is welding and automotive. We do that through an amazing partnership with the Waynesville Career Center and able to do those engagements. And by the way, I think that question was asked. So we have that partnership. So we do have some technical, and I will tell you that our students that teach those courses normally have employment before they're even done teaching their classes.
Wait one second.
Absolutely.
I gotta notice our sound just went out. Is there a problem with our?
Uh-oh.
The citizen just called me, said they're not getting any sound, getting a picture but no sound.
It's just. Are you okay, Mr. Fisher?
Go ahead.
Okay. So in addition to us moving into our building in two thousand and thirteen, we've actually, in two thousand and nineteen, when I started here as the director, we actually also opened a location, extended design at Fort Leonard Wood. So we're located at the Truman Education Center, we're able to serve military families, both in the Waynesville and Plasky County. For those who want to go into that field and/or these officers. And then the second was going over for education for teachers. So we actually created a partnership with Missouri State and MSU. Where they moved into our building in twenty twenty with your permission, of course. And we actually are able to serve a bachelor's degree program, two years with OTC, two years with MSU, and we have supplied fourteen future teachers in the area because of those efforts. We also allow the Waynesville School District and the surrounding communities to host graduate courses for those career teachers that want to extend their education opportunities. So they had a total, I was so surprised, I hope I had a room made enough, but they had thirty-two students who went through the graduate program and actually graduated this past May. So that's exciting, I think. In addition to our location, which with the support of Dr. Childress and our OTC leaders, we were able to open up all the GED requirements that are necessary for anybody who wants to go into the medical field. So what's amazing is that one of our top classes that we get are the prerequisites for the nursing industry and/or for anybody who wants to go into like dental or search tech or the list goes on and on. We also work very closely with the LPN program at the Waynesville Career Center to offer the classes that those students need upon that license so that they can go on to get their ASNs and BSNs. So, and that's a great relationship. We also have a Lincoln University because they are the closest nursing school for us, both on coast and off coast. So in addition to that, I will say that there's two things that are really recent. Don't we all love COVID, right? So what was, and I'm chuckling because we all know that we had to be unconventional, right? We had to figure things out. And through the support of our center president and all of our centers, we created something called Live Virtual Learning. So I'm actually a part of this. We started it two years ago. And what it boils down to is a student can actually zoom in to one of our three locations with a line instructor and be able to also have flexibility with their schedules. And what I really enjoy about that is that that benefits our military community tremendously so that those who are PCSing out don't have to miss a beat with having that line instruction necessary. It also meets the requirements for the benefits that require a seat in a pocket for their classes. So it's actually been a win-win where our students benefit from that. And I'm happy to report that the retention rate of that has actually been very successful, one, and two, our class sizes have actually increased because of that. So it's been a benefit, you know, a little twist with COVID, but it's like, we can't take credit, we kind of rethink about this beforehand, so. And then the most exciting thing that I'm actually really happy to share tonight is we have, starting January twenty-three, the first, I know, make sure this goes on record, good, okay? So we have the first bachelor's degree program that's located in Waynesville. So Waynesville has wanted two locations, our OTC, to offer a bachelor's degree in respiratory therapy. This was actually came out of a request from community leaders and also the local hospitals. So that kind of leads me into, you know, why we feel that our service to this community is so important. And I will tell you that over the last few years that I've been able to be the director of our facility, these are some of the partnerships that we've grown because we want to show that we are committed to, one, our mission, but also the mission of what everybody's needs are. So we're currently members of SOP, AUSA, Lister Families, the Fort Leonard Wood Hotels, Plasky County Growth Alliance, Chamber of Commerce, Rotary, Advisory Committee members on to the Waynesville Career Center committees. And in addition to that, we also serve the nonprofit community or organizations in this area or, I should say, Plasky County throughout, that any nonprofit organization that would like to utilize our building, we can do it free of charge. So that's really kind of been a benefit for the health department, also not just the health department, but for military service members who need a place at those meetings and our soldiers who want to do something off Fort Leonard Wood. So I've got some coins. Everyone come by the office, I'm really proud of my coins. They're really heavy too, I didn't notice how heavy they were gonna be. But more importantly, I also wanted to let you know like the commitment that you give us is we want to give back to you as well. And so some of the things that we're very proud of and we hope to continue with the city of Waynesville is we recently sponsored the Hogs and Frogs, Doug, that was a great event, by the way. We hosted the city appointments for employee appreciation luncheon, we hope to make that a tangible thing, thanks to, I was gonna say Miriam and John and Amber, so thanks to them. We, I didn't know if you guys knew this, but the King R. Unit actually uses our buildings on weekends. And yeah, so we, so we'd like to also continue that. And we also had some computers that were not being used and we donated ten systems to the Waynesville Police Department to utilize for upgrades. So just overall, I just wanted to just kind of let you know how I hope we're serving you and that you're happy with what we're doing, our balancing act in the community. We recently had a strategic planning event, we do that every five years. The input that we get from the city of Waynesville was impactful, hoping to expand with certifications, leading to other opportunities and needs, and we always welcome your suggestions as well. So, I don't know, is that good? Big? Do you guys have any questions that we can answer? Yes, sir.
Any program?
Yes.
And is it just through master's or do we have a doctorate program also?
So that's a great question. So prior to COVID, we actually did the doctorate program with Londonwood University. There was a partnership with them where they were in our building and they hosted the doctoral program right there. We haven't had anybody ask us to do that since Londonwood unfortunately kind of like scaled back a little bit because of their needs. But the master's program is something that we use, that MSU has the opportunity to help in our area. Oh, you're welcome. Anybody else?
Have they actually started the respiratory, is it, is it still in construction phase or that?
Well, that's, well, actually, no, materials were very hard to get at certain points, especially respiratory, respiratory machine because they were being so utilized in the healthcare industry. The lab is actually complete now, which is amazing. I welcome all of you to come by, take a look at it. Oxygen tanks are in. So they actually had a very quick application period for it. So the first core work for the respiratory therapy will start in January, and then the application period for the next cycle of students is actually in September of twenty twenty-three. So hopefully we can see up to fifteen students if possible.
Look, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Thank you guys so much. I appreciate everything that you do, okay?
I want to point out that here's people watching ten twelve because I got a phone call that we get lost sound and it's sounding in the cover, so. There's at least one person out here watching ten twelve. Board of the Commission, Liaisonary Force, Port Board, Mr. Millen.
It was a meeting on the thirteenth, however, I was sick last week, Thursday, Friday, was not able to attend that meeting. Joe Ma had just resigned from the board, so we only have four members now. So when one person is gone, we won't have a forum. And so they didn't have one last week, that's why it just turned in. Maybe we should reach out to the community, look for volunteers that can help our work. Oh, you've tied back the sale. And if I know anybody, maybe we'd like to have two, at least two more men, just to have this a little lead in case I buy them out. I did talk to Randy, and he said one of the things they discussed, but they just had a little discussion, but discussing some more about the pavilions. Yeah, we are, as you all know, probably, we're looking to rename some of those or just name some of those, so I've never been named after prominent people here at Waynesville who's contributed something either to parks or something else. And I went to WCC, and they can make them, only their table is broken, and they're gonna cut it, but they're waiting for a park to come in. And so it'll be delayed a little bit, but we hope to get that done. I think that'd be something that I would be excited about. And that's really about all I have right now.
About a ribbon cutting.
Well, I was sick that day too, so I didn't get to attend the ribbon cutting. I hate that though because I was able to be in on the very beginning planning of it, and so I hate to see, not see.
I'll let John fill us in on that, since he was front and center down there.
Yeah, I was.
Yeah.
He go well.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I appreciate your support and help on that and the planning of that. If you, if you have a second, can we get, we get it to play on the.
Just that one.
Yeah. If you want to watch the ribbon, ribbon cuttings, Jeff, we're gonna play a.
Kind of a little highlight doc of what went down that day, he was there, kind of looks familiar, but a little cold. The video was actually done by the city clerk, Michelle, I thought she did a very good job with that.
It's one of your own. So if you're not sure anybody can hear if you're raised, and that's, that was us and if he wasn't, that was us. Okay, planning and zoning, Allison Davis.
My name is zoning committee, met all about October at five P M. We called, or five thirty P M, I called the.
Get a shot of him, please.
Numbers missing, former West President. We amended the final platform pinnacle place also. We approved the minutes from September thirteenth meeting, the permit. There was no need for a public hearing because that had already been done. The preliminary and final platform pinnacle place, I asked for a motion, revering path approval. The motion was made and it seconded and did pass. I also asked for a motion for the final cloud of pinnacle. The motion was made and seconded, it was voted on and the motion passed, so you will see both of those here tonight. In other business, John Paul discussed the moving the next plan in zoning meeting from November eighth to November second is in order to have a forum present. So no further business, meeting was adjourned at five thirty-four. Next meeting scheduled is November second, twenty twenty-two, at five thirty P M.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Smith? Do you have a resolution? Do I have a motion to accept a resolution? Rice, second? Wilson? No discussion? You just roll call? Or no, just to have Michelle hands approve that? Oh, okay, we'll read it then.
Resolution number fourteen twenty-two, a resolution approving a preliminary plaque of place three of pinnacle at the summit.
Okay. Show hands again. We have an ordinance, ordinance number twenty-two-dash-thirty. Do I have reading of that ordinance, please?
First reading, an ordinance approving final plaque for pinnacle place at the summit, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance approving the final plaque for pinnacle place at the summit, fixing an effective date.
I have a motion, accept this ordinance. Move, Mr. Liberty, the second. Mr. Rice, any discussion, any further discussion on this, John?
Just been reviewed for the type of development that's proposed. I think you see in there a highlighted portion which includes walking trail, which is excluded as a easement or right to walk that trail being granted by the property owner or the developer, but the easement will not be a city easement, so the trail will not be maintained or operated by the state.
Do I have a roll call vote on this?
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Farner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Standing committee reports, utility, Councilman Conley.
All right, I did turn on my mic, so those who are honored, they'll have a man to hear it before me. We had a call our regular meeting order October fourth at three thirty P M. The committee was there, along with the mayor and two staff, and two visitors, Randy Brown and Daryl Warner. During the, Councilman Rice made a motion to approve the minutes, and Councilman Wilson seconded, and they were approved. The December utility meeting is gonna showcase the GIS and the system to this utility committee that are meeting, to sort of progression from paperwork to electronic. That meeting will be December the thirteenth, which is not our regular date, but we moved it forward a week. We reviewed the budget for waste water, waste department, the water department, electric department, natural gas, and sanitation. Department of Updates, water, wastewater, Mr. Biggs said his department had eight, had repaired eighteen water leaks, had nine new services installed, eleven copper samples for maintenance, six services were jetted, several yards were repaired, installed a new main and sum, and they received a D N R inspection with very few recommendations, and those are currently being corrected. The electric department, Mr. Sheldon said his department had six power outages, nine streetlights, eight trees, four missile units, four new services, and three service upgrades for the month of September. Highlights for September included continued work on Mesa, treeching on Dob Road, North Seventeenth and Ruby Bridge. They're continuing working on the GIS system, and one, our single-phase closure, seven power outages. And D N S were called back to clear two small, two small lines which were very old and run. Having no further business, we adjourned for a talk.
Any questions, Mr. Conley? Economic Development, Councilman Rice.
Yes, the Economic Development and Governmental Affairs meeting was called to order at five P M. There were no citizens' comments. We approved the meeting, approved the minutes from meeting from the September sixth meeting. We also approved the minutes from the September fourteenth meeting. We discussed the business spotlight for October, which is parabellum. We also had a lengthy discussion on the Route sixty-six and Ruby Duke Bridge one hundredth year anniversary. Lou Hartman was there, and she stated she would like, she said that she would like to, the support of the city, to do the celebration for the one hundredth year anniversary of the Ruby Duke Bridge. She also stated that. She also stated that uh, like to organize a committee for this event to Randy Brown, Sean Wilson, Doug Potts, myself and a few others. After research, there's no consensus on when the bridge opened. Uh, she found articles that stated from April, May of nineteen twenty-three timeframe. Uh, Louche also uh, would like. To ask the city to designate funds toward buying souvenirs to hand out and banners for the event. Jack Swilburn was there and she would like for the weeds to be removed from the bridge and power washed before the event. With possible smooth walking surfaces, so no one trips on it. Jack also would like to finish the mural. On the lift station with a wraparound American flag and discuss the ideas of creating a Christmas tree in Ruby Duke Park. Uh, Councilman Farner stated there's need to keep the pressure on MoDOT to keep the bridge. Louche stated that she has spoken to Preston Kramer with MoDOT several times. And he has assured her that we could keep the original design. Of the bridge and repair the bridge with an estimated cost of two hundred fifty thousand. Uh, Mr. Doyle stated that Mr. Preston did not provide the same information to him and to the mayor when they spoke to him. Louche said she continued conversations with Mr. Kramer to ensure that. They get to keep the bridge in its original form. Uh, Louche also discussed the Route sixty-six centennial ideas uh, for the year two thousand twenty-six. In other business, we uh, discussed the Plask County Tourism Marketing Assistant Grant. Mr. Doug Potts completed it and submitted the grant. For the Plask County Tourism Marketing Assistance to Market Hogs and Frogs Event for next year. Uh, Mr. Potts will find out if that is approved in December. We also discussed the city uh, of Wayne'sville newsletter. The newsletter provided in the packet will go. Out in utility bills this month. The newsletter includes information on the G I S mapping program for the city. The natural gas cost projections, commercial jet service from Fort Leonard Wood to Dallas and Nashville. And Wayne'sville's business spotlights. And other business, we talked about Hogs and Frogs vendor feedback. Each vendor was provided. A application for feedback and most everything came back very positive and a lot of good ideas for next year. We discussed special events, which Oktoberfest went down October eighth. We have Halloween at the market on October twenty-ninth. We got Pumpkin Fest on October twenty-ninth as well from eleven A M to three P M. And we had the Veterans Day Parade on November eleventh, which will be hosted in Wayne'sville with. Ed is the uh, veteran of the year again. There was a need for closed session. Uh, we went into closed session at five twenty-six P M. Uh, we came out of closed session at six eleven P M, having no further business. The meeting was adjourned at six twelve P M. The next scheduled meeting will be held November first at five P M.
Any questions for Councilman Rice? I do have one question I asked John, the suggestion, move the weeds, power wash and look at the surfaces. I don't know that. We can get into that, that's.
So, um, you know, the um, the upstream side of the bridge, which walk on park side, you know, obviously we have uh, interest in that for sure, but. You're right, as far as maintenance on the bridge or doing any type of improvement on the bridge, bridge deck, uh, sidewalk, anything like that, that would be beyond our.
I just have to. First with Mr. Kramer.
Right, and, and encourage MoDOT to um, make sure those surfaces are passable without trip hazards.
Yeah, that might get hold of sometime next week, both must talk to him.
And the big deal on the bridge, the design is how.
Right.
What do they call that?
She was calling it a spando, um, spando bridge.
What, one of five United States or less than?
No other questions? Go to the grounds, Councilman Farner.
Mayor, I wasn't with any of the ten. Uh, Mr. Wilson did try to ask you, but he was, he was up.
Okay, um, councilwoman, um, Corinne called the meeting, she ordered at five P M. We had a quorum and uh, just the main, the main points of the meeting. That even if we did have citizens comments, still citizens comments by Mr. Joe Creel. Um, and he stated uh, his concern and some of the residents from that area as far as uh. Replacing a stop sign that had been previously removed from Long Street and placed on Call Your Road to be put back on Long Street. We concluded that um, we will do a, a traffic study and then provide more information from there. We talked about uh, also the R V park. Uh, we had received some information from our insurance company about the dead tree that was falling on the properties there. Uh, some R Vs within that area, so we, we talked about a plan to relocate those slots. To create more slots on the opposite side of the trees, moving away so we don't always get those uh, those type of uh, infractions or. Dings on our insurance, so um, Mr. Doyle would like the approval from the committee. Um, to schedule into a budget of twelve to thirteen additional uh, sites. And it's to expand the R V park, but also allow the current patrons to move into these sites while the city works. And uh, and removing the uh, the dead trees and the committee approved. Um, as far as the street department updates, um, Jason Chapman stated that the street department. Has been busy working on a new subdivision, working with um, Fitness Court. Um, they also helped with the additional parking for the Hogs and Frogs Festival. And have received uh, the first bill of stock for the winner. Um, they've been doing a great job, so we commend them on all that support, especially, you know, with the Hogs and Frogs, that, that was a city effort, so I want to say thank you for that anyway. As we give our report, but uh, doing outstanding job. Um, there was need for a closed session. Um, I made a motion to air it to closed session. Um, councilwoman, uh, Corinne's uh, seconded. Um, the motion was passed. Um. Closed session at five thirty-nine, councilwoman, council, myself. I made a motion to uh, to air it to open session. Um, the meeting ended at five fifty-five. And we had no further business. Uh, the, the meeting was adjourned at five fifty-five. The next scheduled meeting will be held November third. Twenty twenty-two at five P M. So, any questions?
No questions? I do have a question, John, how long is it gonna take to get these additional high site ready and be used because? If it's gonna be the rest of the year, we need to be getting those trees taken care of now. We have to pull these guys out for one day or so to get the trees in those areas.
So we're uh, I've been evaluating now the utility departments to improve the water, sewer, electric departments. Uh, because news is the infrastructure is in place, even with the electric. Uh, we have the ability to uh, power the additional twelve, thirteen lots without removing the uh, electric that is currently existing for the existing lots. So. Our utilities are properly sized for this expansion. I don't foresee it being very long, but you're right, the trees, we've been down there, we've received a letter now, we've kind of been put on notice and. And they're mainly the ash trees with the ash floor, so at this point, I mean, these things are falling over. And they are leaning over some uh, very expensive campers now, so we've kind of uh. We're trying to expedite this with uh, the addition of, the, the road is there, we're gonna use the existing road. Um, all we're doing is putting the thirteen sites on the other side of the road and, and trying to get that, the power to it. Probably need the longest um, utilities to extend to those sites. I will say that after uh, it, in the spring, we have discussed. And have been encouraged, if you have a flood and remove those um. Users to not allow them to come in until all uh, overhead objects are actually taken care of, so that would be another source of, if they've been removed. Prior to allowing them to occupy that spot, we would come in and remove the dead trees from that area.
Will that be what, next year then?
Uh, it's supposed to rain Monday about.
We end up a lot of jackers down there, we didn't have an icing situation in the fall winter. So we need to probably find a way, I mean, it, it inconvenience them, if we have to move and cut it down, it wouldn't be like a week, it'd be like a day or so. I mean, when we get flooded, they're inconvenienced for several days, so that slight inconvenience to protect their campers and keep us from any lot of complaints is pretty important. So I should be looking to finding a way to. One or two lots at a time, move them out for, trim those trees, they can get right back in within a day or so. Avoid something looking at.
It would take us, if it was fully um, vacated at this point, we estimate it would take us um, maybe a week or a week and a half to remove. There's, there's a large number of them and some of these trees will require a bucket truck. Uh, because they are, they are uh, dead and, and some won't drop. Would be dangerous to make a bucket on a tree and.
Police committee. Councilman Wilson?
Okay, police committee, we had our meeting on October thirteenth, um, twenty twenty-two. And uh, we had a quorum, it was myself, uh, Councilman Liberty and uh, Councilman Conley also sat in on this meeting. We did have a guest that day, it was uh, Mike Shepard. Um, of course, Mr. Randy Brown and Ashon Cover, who is the county O E M. Um, the meeting, we had, uh, let's see. We did have some citizens comments, actually made citizens comments on behalf of uh, a concern within my own community was uh, the speeding. And putting the hills by the school buses. Um. We brought up to Chief Cordova, Chief Cordova asked if uh. What manner did we want to pursue this, this issue? We chose a diplomatic way to, to forewarn them first and then uh, kind of go later on after that, that point. Uh, which since then, uh, chief has told me that they, they had something to be within the guidelines for the most part, so which was just to give you a little bit of feedback on that. But that being said, uh, Mr. Brown also had some comments, he'd like to express his thanks to the police department for their presence. At the Hogs and Frogs event, which we received a lot of great uh, comments for our uh, law enforcement officers and also our first responders in the fire department. The approval of the minutes, there was a motion by Mr. Liberty. Um, Mr. Conley had seconded the motion, the motion and it passed. Saint Robert Fire Department, Mr. Shepherd, Shepherd, he discussed the Knox, the Knox box account with the city of Wayne'sville, Mr. Shepherd. Point of contact and has ordered fifty-six lots, um, change the alternative date is November the second. Also with the county O E M, she uh, she came to visit us to, to share an initiative. They wanted to. Create a one, a one notification system for the entire county, which is a great idea. She presented a, a great program. Um, it's a lot of different things that, that go into this system. This system has the ability to allow the constituents to also report. Um, they would manage it, each city within the county would, would have access to this program. And what she was doing, she was trying to solicit support uh, from a financial seat, a financial point of view to see if we could actually help. In every city, she's gonna be visiting every city. She came to us first and had to talk to us about this program. Um, it was consensus that it was a great program and we still need to look at, um, you know, how, how it's gonna be funded and things like that, so. Um, we're still waiting on feedback also from uh. Our uh, Mr. Shepherd, who's gonna also give us a little bit of insight on what he thinks about the program as well. Uh, police department updates, Chief Cordova provided his quarterly stats to the committee. Um, the last quarter of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one stats, the crime rate, crime reports, three hundred and thirty-five crime reports. There was two thousand thirty-six traffic stops. In twenty twenty-two, the last quarterly uh, stats with three hundred and thirty-nine crime reports. Um, traffic stops was twenty-eight fifteen. Um, twenty-eight hundred fifteen traffic stops. Chief Cordova discussed that the K nine demonstration that was held on uh, Family Safety Day on August twenty-seventh. Um, Fire Chief Doug Yuriko sent a letter of appreciation for his support. Um, Officer Chapman put in his uh, his notice to resign and has returned to Plask County Sheriff's Department. Chief Cordova provided a letter of recognition to the city employees, Jason Chapman, Daniel Sheldon, Dustin Jones, Tristan, um, Hendricks. For taking immediate action when they saw a child approximately five years old. Running down Sweet Bird Road towards historic Route sixty-six, the child had run into a busy um, historic Route sixty-six intersection. And the city employees stopped the traffic, using themselves as shield and immediately picked up the boy. And security helping to remove him from harm's way. The child was approximately one mile away from his residence. Chief Cordova believes that without the immediate action. Of all the Wayne'sville employees, the child would have been seriously injured at a heavy uh, in, in, in that heavy morning traffic. So just uh, you know, we have our, everybody's engaged in the city and I just think that's commendable um, for what they did at that particular time, but as this report went forward and we, we talked about. Discuss other things later about recognition.
You know, a young child can move fast with a, with a broom.
I guarantee you that, I'd like to tell him about the death of his mom twice off the Sweet Bird Road.
But we, we thank uh, all of our staffers who we had engaged, not just standing back and watching, but uh, we had problems solved. So as far as uh, service, special events, I won't mention any other special events other than the fact that what the police department. Was supposed to be supporting, they're gonna, they was asked to support the Pumpkin Fest and also of course the Veterans Day Parade, uh, both. And, and capacity of traffic support. There was, there was a need for closed session, committee had closed session at four-elevens. Um, the committee turned to open session at four twenty-three. Um, having no further business, the meeting adjourned at four twenty-three, the next scheduled meeting for November, is, is for November tenth, twenty twenty-two at three thirty P M. So, did you have any questions?
Questions?
I have one question.
When is the dinner, or what time is the dinners?
It's always eleven o'clock.
Finance and Human Resource Committee, Councilman Davis?
I was not here. I would like to defer to John to give the report. What about you? And, and being here, but I had to skate on.
Okay, passing it, I won't share it one off.
Oh, you could, were you? Anyway. Since uh, the finance committee met on October the thirteenth, we were a little short on people. Actually, I was the only committee member there. Uh, we have. City staff and. Councilman Liberty, who was not a guest, he actually sat in and owed, so we had a quorum. Called to order at five. I served as the chairman. No citizen comments. We approved the September minutes, approved paying the bills. The cash due, cash flow accounting status. We reviewed the, the city's cash flow report, bank account, have a status of year-to-date budget. City has completed seventy-five percent of the fiscal year with expenses standing at seventy-six percent and revenues at seventy-eight percent. City bank accounts have a total of five billion eight hundred eighty thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-one cents. We have ninety-one cents in our. That's uh, in re, city, in restricted funds, reserve funds and usable money. We reviewed the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. We reviewed the requests for bids for bank services. It was sent out to uh, local banks on September the twenty-eighth and they are due back in October. Banks have invited the November meeting to stake individuals in the conflict and close session to answer questions about their bids. We discussed ARPA request. And then we basically changed it to the ARPA budget. The utility building relief was considered to be too restrictive and it was sunsetted immediately. The grant for grocery and convenience workers. Was also sunsetted immediately due to a lack of interest, which really surprises me. The uh. Build a better program, budgeted at fifty thousand dollars and it will end on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. We had five hundred ninety-one thousand for grant matches, twenty-five thousand dollars for Iowa Seventeenth Park. Thirty thousand for small business enhancement. Building demo and renovating grant at fifty thousand. Leaf London dump at eighty-five thousand. Animal shelter renovation, fifty thousand. R V park, fifty thou, expansion, fifty thousand dollars. Police department needs forty thousand dollars for a total of nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. We also reviewed the salary schedule. Looked over the auditors' report, which was a very good report, no uh. Dominated discrepancy, nobody stayed in line, everything is accounted for. Looked over the auditor's report, which was a very good report, no, uh, no major discrepancies, nobody stayed in line, everything is accounted for.
Give the ninety-one cents.
Chip ninety, you can always bug me with that, or it'll count as an odd number.
That's good, we have a good finance officer.
Yeah.
She, she keeps track of every penny.
I'm the type that would go in and put nine cents in just to balance. And if sure that I put that nine cents in, it would not pop up again the next month with an odd number. Um, we, Mr. Doyle stated the city had closed on the property on Highway seventeen and, uh, for a future expansion of Ruby Dean Park. Purchase approved by council earlier this year, ARPUs and park acquisition plans are renewed. We had no update on the essential room there, we had a need for closed session, closed session. And the vote was called, went into, into the closed session at six-oh degree, came out at six-fifty-four. Adjourned at six-fifty-four, next meeting is November the two, at five P M.
Any questions? Other business? Airport, mayor. Help, sorry, airport.
Meeting was called to order at three o'clock, uh, budget was provided to the board, reflects seventy-five percent of the year. Revenue tracked at eighty-seven percent, expenses seventy-nine. Limbery budget provided by Vice Chairman Doyle. And the final budget will be reviewed on October's meeting, which is the twenty-fifth of this month. We discussed hangar rental fees and that's being looked into at this time to see what, around this area, what they're charging. Contour airline, they should have started, correct? I mean eighteenth? That's what it says, yep, thank you. Eighteenth contour started, uh, they do, uh, fly to Memphis and Dallas, Texas.
Nashville, Denver.
That's close, Nashville.
It's close.
Why does it say Memphis? He must have put that. Uh, terminal area master plan, follow-up meeting being out. Grant funding update, uh, the three million dollar airport terminal project grant funding was rescinded due to the fact that it was not ready to be, the property wasn't ready to be worked on. We will reapply and I believe that was, that shouldn't be a problem there. S O P marketing report, Aaron Monken stated that Google ads have been verified. He's updated Google ads reflecting airline, new rap card design was presented to the board and approved. Uh, with no further business, the meeting was adjourned at three-thirty-three. Next meeting again will be the twenty-fifth of this month, three o'clock at St. Robert City Hall.
Questions to Mr. Liberty? John, help, you have other business?
No other business, uh, from me.
City's industry report.
Okay, um, to go through that, the twenty forty-three final budget, uh, staff is working on, uh, finalizing the, uh, city of Waynesville's twenty twenty-three operating budget, uh, we expect to, uh, present this budget at the, uh, next regularly scheduled Finance and Human Resources Committee, which will be held Thursday, November tenth at five P M. That budget, if approved by that committee, will be forwarded to the council at the next regularly scheduled council meeting, which will be Thursday, November seventeenth. Uh, we'll discuss about the hundredth year anniversary of the Ruby Dean Bridge that will be, uh, coming next summer, um, we will do killers of that. Uh, city of Waynesville G I S mapping, also touched on this a little bit in your utility, uh, update, utility meeting update. We'd like to invite all to attend, uh, public, this is a new mapping, uh, software that we currently started to, uh, develop the disc coming here. You guys have probably seen this, I'm serving walking on, I'm telling the streets.
You skip the mayor.
This will be a, um, real-time mapping software that you can all view, uh, as, as a community or as a city. We utilize this to identify, locate water meters, sewer manholes, water valves, fire hydrants, electric meters, electric junction boxes, overhead power locations. We have everything that we can with mapping, um, the benefit of this would be, uh, training personnel not knowing where the water meter is in certain avenues, in certain locations, they can find it very easily, there's a map, there's a phone, follow, follow the knot that you're looking for, you'll get there. Um, another useful would be, uh, take an ice storm, that doctor mentioned earlier, if we have an ice storm, we're able to have our guys mitigate that ice storm through mutual aid in the office. And it cuts down on communication needs, you're actually watching real time as these power outages happen and can send your mutual aid, uh, help, which is typically from out of town, if you look at, um, uh, recently the hurricane in Florida. To, to manage that in a setting like that, your, your guys are more valuable to you in the office than they are in the field. And they are actually managing different teams from across the nation to get them to this location. So we provide that mapping to them and they can bring these services back online, uh, almost seamlessly and immediately. So that's something that, uh, we will be presenting at a, um, utility meeting in December. Right now it's, it's scheduled for December thirteenth at three-thirty, again, um, we will probably host it in council chambers and, uh, the community is, uh, welcome to it again. The fitness court, again, had a video and ribbon cutting of that, it's a very, um, very popular feature in our market. I'm telling you, since it's open last Friday, there's been a lot of pictures, a lot of photos, a lot of people utilizing that piece of equipment. And, uh, very proud to be able to complete that on time and, uh, it looks very nice. Our city pretty done an amazing job putting that together and, and breaking that habit. And just to, um, update on some upcoming events, pumpkin fest from eleven A M. to three P M. We'll be at Saturday, October twenty-ninth, Halloween at the markets, October twenty-ninth, Veteran's Day Parade, eleven A M. on the eleventh. And, um, Waynesville City Hall will be closed on Veteran's Day, um, just to update you.
John? Council comments, let's start with Mr. Congressman.
Oh my God.
Well, I really don't have a lot of comment on here, other than that we keep getting dark and we had notices getting colder. So watch out for the kids in the morning, especially when it's got temperatures reading. Kids have reflective costume and lights and be accustomed to the weather. Yep, that'll be the end of my comments.
The only thing I have is making honor to correct who's the loc, location and the sign. That's it.
Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, I want to, um, let everyone know that we are under a severe drought, we're in a, uh, drought right now. And do not burn, it's, we're in a burn ban right now, so you don't want to be burning any of the leaves. Although it is a great time to go out and look at the leaves this week and next week, so do that.
Mr. Wilson? I actually have a few things, I'm going to take a moment. So this weekend, there's an event that's out, that always happens every year, for those that know, it's called the Teen Summit, it's taking place at the arc. And this is for any youth that, um, want to attend, and this is to help me deal with things like bullying and things of that nature. So, um, some of the notable speakers are going to be some local officials, there will be, uh, clergy, there will be government officials. Uh, there will be, uh, some of our mental health professionals, um, and educators and, and, and more. So it will be, uh, uh, an environment for our youth to kind of reach out to help deal with bullying and things on that. So if you are in the area, um, at that time at the arc, um, the event takes place from ten A M. to two P M. There will be food provided for those that attend. Um, I also have something, I think the, when we have trick or treating this month, the hours for trick or treating for the city is from six-thirty to nine P M., correct? Uh, on that, on the evening of, of that, that night. So, uh, just be, just be advised on the thirty-first, six to nine, okay, from six to nine, so we're going to give you thirty minutes more. So it's from six P M. to nine P M., um, for, for your safety, so we know, um, just be respectful of all of the, um, those within the city. One other thing I want to point out is we know that next month is our, um, Veterans Day Parade. But on the ninth of November, A U S A is sponsoring a Vietnam veteran commemoration. So anyone that has served during the time of, uh, as a Vietnam veteran that has served from November first, nineteen fifty-five to May fifteenth, nineteen seventy-five, you will receive a certificate of your service in a pen. So it doesn't matter what city you're in, if you are a Vietnam veteran, we, we want to make sure that you get recognized. Now, this is sponsored by U S, um, A U S A, um, if you have any further, um, questions about this, you can call, um, retired, uh, is it retired? The content is Freddie Rock and his phone number is five-seven-three, I hope you want to public, five-seven-three, five-two-eight, five-nine-nine-seven. Or you can email, um, Foxtrot Lima Tango Bravo Romeo Oscar Charlie Kilo at gmail dot com. For those, if you can remind you, you know, you can get it, all right? So, um, so that's all the comments I have, enjoy your, like, month of October, December, 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 so.
Mr. Lakes?
So I've been, uh, running around town a lot of it lately, um, for some reason I've gotten my hamburger for food again. So I just want to say this, there is a lot of places around here that have signs on their doors that have changed their hours because they can't get help. And then I will sit in that location and hear people yell at the wait staff and the kitchen staff and everybody else about what they're not doing. But what everybody fails to realize is that they are showing up to work so they can serve you, or so many others are not. So I will say, be nice to people that are showing up to work. Uh, they're, they're there, you're able to eat, it might take a little longer, uh, it might take a little longer to DM to eat, but they're showing up. So, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. Farne?
I've got a couple things, Mayor, first off, I want to touch on Halloween, all the little kids after the trick or treating, mom, dad, when the kids come home, they inspect their candy. With the recent fentanyl scare going on in the country, it's, it's a chance that some weirdo could put something in those little kids' bag or a tumbler, whatever you hear. Check that candy before you put it in. Second thing, Build It Back Better program, we still have some money left. If you got leaky windows, leaky doors, you need some insulation, check the city hall, we may be able to help.
I am looking for volunteers for the park board and many, many other things on the city, for anybody in the city that would like to volunteer their time and effort, we would appreciate it. Also, the city is going to provide the next several days, great weather, seventy, seventy-five the day, fifty, forty at night, so you can thank the city for that. No, no additional charge. Return.
Old Henry, Paul.
The only additional charge is the same, you know, the electric.